Good things to say at the beginning of the meeting. But as I noted at several meetings, there is a web address that gets everybody to our information. Yeah, helps get some understanding what they'd have to do and what to do to join us in the Zoom meeting. And just for the record, it is HTTPS colon forward slash forward slash WWW. NorwalkCT.org nineteen thirteen meeting dash notices. With that, we have arranged it so members of the public can call in and listen to a meeting. They will not be able to speak or see any of the meeting participants. Each meeting will use a unique meeting webinar ID, bind the information using the link I just gave. Members of the public who wish to provide live comments will need to register in advance and use the Zoom meeting platform. To join this meeting, all participants will be muted upon entering. To speak, click Raise Your Hand Indicator and you will be called on by the host of the meeting during the public comment section. Actually, it's multiple sections. Please find the information using the link. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting but are not participating can view a live stream on the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. This stream is delayed by approximately twenty seconds. Please find the information using the link. The meeting recording and minutes will be posted on the City of Norwalk website within seven days after the meeting. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment are encouraged to submit those via email in advance to the meeting. For those comments to be read in the record, they should be submitted at least four hours in advance. To teamalgonado@norwalkct.org. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order. A brief roll call. So everybody on Zoom, so I'm pretty sure everybody that my names I want to call is there. Lee, Tom, Steve, Keith, myself, and Ben. I miss anybody? Okay, when we form up as a board, then I'll be more formal, but not right this second. Tammy, are we okay to go with the agenda as is? No changes to the agenda. Everything's fine, right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, Lee, you've had the agenda?
I don't actually have the agenda in front of me, but I have all the paperwork in front of me.
Oh, good.
So if you give me the subject number or address, I can begin.
So the first time through for the first item, which is Beth's place. It's going to be me, Tom, Ben, Steve, Keith. Lee, you're going to sit out till the next one, which is the folks up off of Westport Avenue. And we'll figure out what we're going to do when we look at the request for extensions. Those are usually not particularly difficult. So with that, Mr. Secretary, if you would handle twenty-three oh nineteen oh one?
Very good. Application two-three dash one zero one nine dash zero one for Beth's Place. S. Edward Parker, Appeal of Staff Determination of Number of Stories for a Proposed Tower slash Attic Space Edition. In the alternative variants of number of stories, three proposed maximum allowed two and a half. Section one-one-eight dash three-five-zero C. For a Proposed Tower slash Attic Space Edition at an existing single-family residence in C Resident Zone. Property located at Fort Beth's Place, District Three, Block Thirty-Six, Lot Twenty-Four. Request: The applicant seeks an appeal of staff determination that the proposed tower addition per definition of story constitutes a third story. If the appeal is denied, the applicant requests a variance to allow three stories for the proposed tower addition. Background: The existing single-family dwelling was built in nineteen twenty. In June twenty twenty-three, the applicant submitted renovation plans that included the tower addition. Staff advised that the tower was non-compliant with the number of stories. The plans were modified to comply with current regulations and a zoning permit was issued in September. The applicant prefers the plan with the tower and is now before the board with the request for appeal or in the alternative variants. Analysis and findings: Norwalk zoning regulations definition of story that part of a building between any floor and the floor above or in its absence, the ceiling or roof above. Amended effective seven thirty dash nineteen eighty-two, four dash twelve dash eighty-five, two twenty-four nineteen eighty-nine, seven twenty-seven, two thousand and seven. A. A story shall constitute the full story where, one, the ceiling is more than three feet above the average elevation of the finished grade adjacent to the exterior wall of the street facade. Or, two, the lot is located within a development park as declared herein and the ceiling of which is three feet or more above the centerline elevation of the development park private way. B. Any story between a pitched roof and the uppermost full story, the floor of which is not more than two feet below the plate, shall be counted as a half-story. Provided that not more than sixty percent of the floor, gross floor area is finished for use or occupancy. Except for buildings within a development park, at no point regardless of topography shall the number of stories exceed by more than one the maximum number of stories as otherwise would be permitted. Because the tower exceeds two feet distant between the floor and the roof plate, the tower must be treated as a third story. The current zoning permit issued features an approved proposed dormer to be installed in the half-story. While the plan is not the applicant's preferred design, it is a zoning compliant alternative. Staff does not identify a zoning hardship to support a variance request for three stories, nor does staff see another way to interpret and apply the story definition for the proposed tower. Attachment: Copy of issued zoning permit and approved elevation plan with dormer. Mr. Chairman, you may proceed.
With regard to that technical explanation, is anybody confused by that? You know what we mean when we talk about a plate, which plate it is in the house we're talking about?
No, I could, I could use some update on that.
Yeah, visual would be helpful.
Yeah, well, Tammy got me up to speed, so I'll get you up to speed. Basically, above the top floor, between that and a slanted roof, there is a limit as to how high the sidewalk can be. And the plate they're talking about is the floor plate or the ceiling of similar to the ceiling of the top floor. There's usually some rafters in between what would be the floor up there and the top ceiling of the top. So the higher it gets, the more that you have to consider the third floor. And that makes sense, obviously. And so there's a limit, and that's that two-foot limit. There's other limits too, sixty percent utilization, that kind of thing. We run into this before where people wanted to utilize an attic. And we kind of said, you can only use part of it. That's the reason why. So with that in mind, do we have somebody representing the applicant? Ed, are you representing yourself?
I'm Ed Parker, yes.
Okay, come right ahead.
Okay, can I share my screen, Tammy?
Yes, you're able to.
Tammy can help you, yes.
Okay, can you see that?
Yep.
Okay, I'm just going to keep it here because I think if I do it in slide mode, it messes something up. But this is the house on the corner of Beth's Place. This is for Beth's Place. You can see on the photo on the, on the left, it's almost identical to the house on this two beds. And then on the corner, you can see there is a diverse sort of housing stock there as well. This house was built, as was mentioned, was built in nineteen twenty. It's a shingle-style cottage, and it's quite small. But its proportions actually work out really nicely in the neighborhood compared to the neighbor itself. And that's what we liked about the property, and that's what we'd like to keep. The roof itself, you can see you have an eve down at the second story. And this front piece here is a dormer, so the roof actually spans from first floor up to the attic space and then back down on the other side here to a second floor plate. The attic itself is only six feet from floor to ridge, which isn't habitable, right? It's not usable space. What we, the house itself, we are expanding this backside. There was a garage here that we had to take down because it was falling down. And we're going to expand this bedroom here, and we just needed one other thing, which is a home office in the, in the, in the house. And only needed a very small amount of square footage to make that happen. So we were proposing this tower on the, on the building. So we basically keeping the, the existing roof and the dormer in the front and the look of the building and the, and the size of the building with this application. The tower itself is just, is accessed by a spiral stair that's just a, a single office, and it's a hundred and seventy-five square feet. Here, as we already went through the definition of story, but this attic story is a hundred and seventy-two square feet, and it's actually less than eighteen percent of the second floor below. So it by far, you know, meets the sixty percent of gross area below as a, as a tiny addition. In this image here, the north elevation, basically, this is the tower that we're, we're wanting to put in. It's still six feet below the height restrictions that are required in the, in the C zone. In order, in the application that was actually accepted by zoning, basically, we have to take this roof and bring it up and make it taller to envelop the tower so that it nests inside the roof structure in, in, in effect, making the, the house and the attic much larger. The accepted application is thirty-one percent of the floor area with a higher roof. And it just doesn't seem to make sense to me that, that, you know, what I'm asking it for is to keep my house smaller. And my understanding of these zoning regulations is to, to limit the volume and the size of, of these properties in each zone. When in effect, in this particular case, it's making it larger. One of the things that I wanted to point out is, is in this new application or in, in working with Tammy and, and the zoning department, basically, they considered this tower a dormer because it's really sort of the only thing that they, that the zoning code allows. They never talk about dormer. There's not an exception for dormer, or sorry, tower. There's no section in the code that addresses the architectural element that is the tower. And that's what I'm sort of appealing, that this is a gray area that's, that's not discussed. But it actually is an element in many different architectural styles in Norwalk, in, in the area. Victorian, Queen Anne, shingle style, Tudor, Mediterranean, French Norman, all have use of a tower element in it. And there are examples of that. The only thing I could find on towers was in section one eighteen eight-ten J. And it talks about the height provisions these regulations may apply, except for these things, and they, and they say water tank or tower. But I, I don't know how this is actually utilized in that. When talking to Jayla in the zoning department, she also wanted to classify the tower as a cupola, which clearly it's not a cupola because it's occupied. And so that doesn't make sense either. But there is this notice of tower, whether operational or as an architectural feature, that the height provisions shall not apply. Well, this isn't a height issue. It's a story issue. I understand that. But I couldn't find any, anything about that. So then lastly, these, I just drove around the neighborhood and found examples of exactly what we're, what we're doing here in the existing architecture. Now, I understand this is probably before the zoning codes. But with Queen Anne and Victorian examples, this is directly across the street. This is clearly, I mean, this is exactly what we're asking to do. And as an example of, of, of that, this is, these are down on Sound, Soundview. A little bit further away, there's a little bit, a few more. This is French Norman piece, Colonial Victorians. This was a, a little lookout on a shingle style piece as well. So basically, in effect, you know, the, the, the look of the house, we'd like to keep. And we like the, the small intimate nature of it. We just want this one small usable area of attic without having to add a completely, a complete third story, as far as I'm concerned, onto the top of the house to make that work. So what I'm asking, and I don't feel like a variance is sort of the, the actual right way to go because it, it doesn't seem that this should be designated as a third story because it's so small and it's within the height restrictions and meets all of the other criteria. So that is my presentation. Thank you for your time.
Board members have questions? Lee, you have a few?
Oh, I certainly do. One of the things, and I mean, in a sense, this is an architectural design problem. I understand the use of towers, turrets, whatever name you want to give it. I, I don't find the tower out of place or disturbing. Actually, the thing I find most disturbing about the design is it appears you're adding a garage with itself being just this block. No pitched roofs, nothing, no architectural interest. Why couldn't the home office be put over the garage? It would, I think, improve the architectural appearance of that block being proposed as a garage, and it would end the problem of the tower or the turret.
Yeah, hang on one second. Ed, you got zoning approval for, for what?
I got zoning approval for a different scheme that it made, basically raised the roof, the same, the same program.
Is it a dormer? Is that what it was?
Yeah, it raised the roof and, and then pushed the tower in so that it became a dormer. That's, that's what we have approved.
And, and the garage you have to replace because it was falling down.
The garage is actually a detached garage. And the reason we can't put anything over top of it is because it's detached. And the second story where we have it provided is the limit of its expansion. So that is a, that is a fifteen-foot setback from that property line. So that area that's flat in the back is actually a, a deck so that we can look at the water over the, over the sound, over the, in between the houses there.
And so this becomes less confusing. The applicant would prefer to treat this differently and get an approval for his plan as he's presenting it. When he went to zoning, he got an approval, but for a different structure than he'd prefer. And so you have to know that he has a, an approval for something he's not in love with. Secondly, the garage is falling down and he's replacing it. There's no grand plan relating to the garage other than I think you have a connector between the house and the garage, if I recall.
The, the existing garage was, was heaved up and actually tilting and seriously a danger. So I got the letter of demolition from the building department. And then we went ahead and demoed the, the, the garage and took down the tree that was causing the problem. We are putting the garage in, back in place in the exact same place. So there is a four-foot separation between the house and the garage that remains. And there's a, a walkway in between.
I just wanted Lee to be fully up to speed. So there, there, I think what the applicant has to demonstrate to us is that he has a hardship and therefore needs the variance. The applicant doesn't think he needs a variance. So, you know, we have a philosophical difference as well as a difference in what zoning approved and what he's asking for. Go ahead, Lee.
That was, that's where I was going to ask a question, Andy, to just ask Tammy to repeat why this didn't get approved as is. Because I listened to both sides and I'm not quite sure I see the distinction.
Yeah, so the, the tower design presents as a third story per the definition. So the vertical space, the vertical wall, that's coming, you know, kind of against or, or in front of that pitched roof. It, it doesn't meet that criteria of the, the, the ceiling or floor below being less than two feet between the plate above. And the plate we're talking about is the wall plate where the, where the roof rafters rest on top. So basically, it is like Ed pointed out, it is meant to control the bulk. However, it doesn't account for this, and he's correct that we did say he could potentially do a cupola if he would send, you know, I understood that didn't meet his needs as well. And that, that definition that he referenced, that section for tower, still doesn't cover what his goal or his, his proposed plan is because it doesn't, it's not an exclusion for stories. It's an exclusion for height. So that's the problem. It's just triggering this story definition where we have to label that a third story. He did present this alternative plan after we, you know, discussed the situation that meets the dormer definition. But by doing that, he did need to achieve his goal. He needed to expand that half-story or attic space and then place a dormer, a dormer that is set in.
Okay, so the, his original plan that he wanted approval for took only a part of the attic and created a small room. Am I right?
Correct, yeah. Yeah.
So there we are, Lee.
Between a rock and a hard place.
So it, it appears to me is that we're having aesthetics issue here, that the dormer is probably not going to cut it. A widow's walk would look really nice there. It would forge you a nice view of the, of the harbor. It just seemed, I don't know, that office could be put somewhere else. And I'm just thinking that, not a sleight of hand, but it seems like it's, it's a way to kind of juck the thing up for a better view in, in my little cynical opinion. Sorry.
Well, can I, so the, we're not making it any higher than it needs to be. The dormer application that was approved is the same height. The, the difference between the two is that I have to make the roof bigger to cover the, the, the tower dormer. The existing attic, like I said, and this is important, the existing habit attic is only six feet high. That's ridge. That's to the top of the ridge where the triangle meets right here. So it's not usable space. So instead of doing anything to the existing roof, we just put a, a, a usable space right beside it so that, you know, we'd have the amount of room that we, we needed, and that was it. The, the existing attic will still remain. It'll just be storage, which is the other thing that we need. But I don't need storage that's eight feet high. And that's what, what, what happens if, with the approved zoning application. I end up with actually more than double the square footage than, than this application. And that's only because we're, we're, we're making part of it just storage, so that doesn't count. It, it, it's still even bigger than that.
All right, so it looks that you say, if, if I'm understanding you and Tammy, you make sure that I get it right too. You're under the approved plan, you have to raise the roof ridge three feet. Not two, but three, because you got to get the rafters in there.
I believe, Tammy, it's, it's more like, right now, the ridge is at two, twenty-eight feet. And, and under the approved plan, it would be at thirty-eight feet. So it's about ten feet high to get the, and to make the.
And with your turret plan, the roof line, other than where the turret is, stays the same. Is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
All right. So under the approved plan, Tom, he gets to raise a lot of things way up in there. What his request is, is not to do that and just the turret.
That's absolutely correct. Yes.
So in some respects, building the turret is less expensive than the approved plan.
Yeah, except that we can't consider that. So next.
Well, I know we never, we never consider cost. Can we see what was approved?
No, we, we have an approval of doing the dormers and raising the roof ten feet for the, the centerline of the.
Ed, do you have those plans handy?
I do. Let me, give me one second. I can.
But with all that in mind, he has an option, which I don't think the tower is all that large, is it, Aunt Tammy?
It's all that what?
Isn't that large? What, twelve feet across?
Yeah, both ways, it's really not. It's just, again, I don't have, you know, it's just the definition and.
So it's not, it's not a widow's walk, and it's not a cupola. It's a odd-shaped room in the shape of a tower.
It's a dormer, not a dormer.
So here is the, here's the, the one that was approved. So this, this roof is, is generally about right here. We had to continue it across the whole volume and then bring it back down here. This dormer looked really funny with, with this huge roof into it. So it put a gable on that side, and then the tower just nested in it. And again, the heights of the tower remain the same. All this is the same. It's just this roof got substantially bigger.
Well, point to the substantially bigger roof again slowly so that.
Hold on a second. Let me, let me get you to the, to the elevations. It might be, yeah, here. So this, the exist, let's see, this is at thirty, I can't read that. Thirty-two foot high, the existing is at twenty twenty-five. So that is, that, so that raises that up. So this, this doesn't change at all, this height of the, of the dormer.
Is everybody clear?
Yes.
A quick question. So the reason that, excuse me, that this plan is approved is because by bringing the roof line up, you basically turn it from a full story into a half story. Is, is that correct? And that's what makes it pass?
Yes.
Yes, a half-story with an allowed dormer.
By making it bigger, we're making it a half-story as opposed to a full story.
Yeah, it seems kind of, seems kind of backwards to me.
And, and Tammy was great. I mean, she, we, we worked through, this is what we would have to do if, if we, and we needed this other space. So this was the alternate that we went with just to sort of keep things rolling. In the meantime, then also filing this other permit or this application with the zoning board so that we could consider this tower idea, which we like much better, and it affects so much less. So that we could consider this tower idea, which we like much better and it affects so much less of the house.
All right, just, just a quick comment. The um, zoning board and zoning board of appeals staff was following the code. The ZBA board um, can decide to enforce that or if they feel it is appropriate, um, waive that. Uh, so the, the questioning we should be going forward with is, um, do you see a reason? Is there any hardship involved? Uh, or are there other practical considerations that are very, uh, important to the project?
Um, no, I mean, the, the, well, of course, the only hardship, not that this is a point in our, um, in our thing is, is financial. I mean, it's substantially more expensive to put a whole new roof on the whole thing. Um, and, and it, and it changes the character of the house. Um, which we're trying not to do. I mean, there is a row of, um, basically three-story rental apartments right on Bets, um, the next, uh, right across the street that have full, basically three-story apartments up there, um, but the, under a pitched roof. That's not what we wanted to emulate. We wanted to emulate, um, Mary Beth Monahan's, uh, house right next door. And I should mention that we, that I spoke with, um, my two neighbors that are adjacent and they both sent letters of support for this application.
Tammy, we read them in? Did everybody get the letters of support?
Uh, yeah, but we, we haven't read them for the record yet. And we have a couple of attendees who may want to speak, I'm not sure.
Yeah, Lee, uh, do you have the letters?
Yeah, somewhere. I'll find them.
Okay, and while Lee's digging around for the letters, um, any other board member have any other questions that have arisen while they've been hearing all this?
No.
Have an observation. The observation is that I have the sense, certainly more than a sense for me that the design as presented, um, meets lots of valuable criteria such as, uh, it isn't as much as bulky, um, it's more in keeping with the neighborhood. And what we're trying to address, or what I'm trying to address, I don't wanna speak for others, is is there a way, um, or to, to approve it that doesn't compromise our role and our criteria? Do you, Andy, if I, does that make sense to you?
Uh, yeah, Tammy, if we went with, um, Mr. Parker's proposed design, uh, rather than the one that was approved by zoning, did we bump into any other zoning issues?
No.
Okay, all right. The question is, you guys did your job and, and you found that, uh, it didn't meet the zoning criteria. And we can look at the zoning criteria and see if we want them applied or whether we wanna vary this. Really boils down to that.
I agree.
Andy, I've got the two letters, if you'd like me to read them into the.
Yeah, please, thank you, Lee.
Okay, to whom it may concern, I met with Ed Parker this past weekend and he shared his plan for his house at Four Bets Place. I live at sixteen Bets Place right next door. The house design looks wonderful and will definitely enhance our neighborhood. The Tommy works well with the city's plan to beautify Seaview Avenue and Veterans Park in the works. Thank you, Susan Arnold, sixteen Bets Place. Uh, hello, I met with Ed Parker regarding his plans for Four Bets Place, Norwalk, Connecticut. I own my home located directly next door at Two Bets Place. The plan he shared with us looked well-designed as, and does not appear to be intrusive to the style of the neighborhood. I approve of the design and look forward to the improvements he will make to the area. Thank you, Mary Beth Monahan.
And so we, we do have one member of the public who would like to speak. Are we ready for her?
Yeah, who is it that would like to speak?
It is Diane Cece. Diane, I'm gonna allow you to speak now.
Okay, put Diane on and let her talk.
Uh, good evening, can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you.
Uh, good evening, everyone, and, um, Chairman, Mr. Conroy, it's good to see you.
Yes, Diane, good to see you, hear you.
I was gonna say, it's good to be seen, but I'm hiding behind the camera. And also you too, Mr. Levy, I haven't seen you in a long time and I.
Uh, Diana, it has been a long time.
Yeah, it has. Um, in any event, um, good to see everyone and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had originally had this, um, item catch my eye, um, in relationship to it being on Bets Place. Um, first of all, this is Diane Cece, um, Olmstead Place in East Norwalk. And I am also the Board President of the East Norwalk Neighborhood Association. And, um, I will actually speak in that capacity tonight as well. Um, so the reason why this caught my eye in the first place is that it's Bets Place. And, um, one of the concerns that we have, that these things are on our radar screen, um, any application has to do more with um, density that creates, um, or, or changes that create residential density and parking issues. And this seems to be an application that those are neither concerns. Um, but, um, I was able to, and I may just wanna mention this to the chair. I noticed that with your agendas, the supporting documents aren't included as a part of your agenda as a link. Um, so when I wanted to find the documents that Mr. Parker was nice enough to show, share his screen with, um, I actually had to do a search in the city system and I stumbled upon them. So just as a point of reference, it may be easier for people to be more engaged when, um, when we can see those drawings, um, ahead of time. So I did take a look at them beforehand and I certainly understood the situation. And I wanna say a couple of things. First of all, I did have originally the same questions as, uh, as Mr. Levy did. Um, but I wanna say that the, the architecture, um, that's being proposed here and the, the alternative proposal, um, I don't find it to be objectionable at all. Um, I would also say that it is something that I think it's a good design. And to Mr. Parker's point, I think it fits in well, um, with the, with the character and the architecture, um, of the neighborhood. Um, I don't think it makes sense to require driving that roof height higher to be able to comply with the code that actually, it, it isn't gonna impact the height of the tower as he showed you. It's simply going to impact the height of the roof. And ironically, that's the item I would have been, um, objecting to. Because that completely loses the character, um, of the home and the style, um, regardless of, um, uh, you know, wh- what the tower would end up looking like. I'll just throw in as a comment that, um, this is one of, I think it's an example of where um, our code, our existing zoning code may not have anticipated um, this type of, um, need. And I, I know for sure, Mr. Parker, it would not have anticipated how creative um, you were in coming up with this design. And so, um, most of you probably know that our zoning regulations are under massive rewrite right now. And, and, um, if I have time, I might suggest to, um, to Tammy and Mr. Kleppin that this, that this be something that they reconsider. And then other folks won't have to go through this. Um, I, I would say too that the, the increased, is, is, if you did, if he did have to comply with what zoning has already approved according to the code, um, you would have then that whole roof line raised. And my other concern there would be down the road, that I'm not sure then with the tower, um, I'm not sure what constitutes a bedroom, but then if there was a door into the tower so that the office was private and if the office had some storage space in there, um, does, does that then actually, um, become a potential bedroom? But that may not be your purview to have to consider this evening. Um, and I would say that the, i- if, if, if he doesn't get this variance and I, I haven't heard anything yet tonight that would suggest there, you know, a reason not to grant it. Um, cause I certainly think the hardship may not just be to Mr. Parker, but I think the hardship would be to the neighborhood to, you know, if he's forced to go the other route. I'm not saying that he would do that, but if he, if he has to go that route, the hardship would certainly be on the, um, on the aesthetics in the neighborhood. And, um, and so there's really unintended consequences now to complying with the code versus what this gentleman wants to do. Um, just bear with me a moment, I'm sorry, I was scribbling notes as you folks were talking. Right, so I, I, I think that's it. For all the points that you just spoke about, I think it's something, I, I've never really been involved with ZBA, um, before. And so I'm, I'm not quite sure what the regulations are for what you get to take into account. But I would say that if this is a type of thing where you have leeway, um, to go one way or the other, um, having seen what I saw tonight, and I'm not saying that I've reviewed all these plans, so I'll just add that caveat. But having seen what I saw tonight, I would, um, hope that you would, um, knowing what the alternative could be, I would hope that you would grant this request, um, from the applicant and, and I would hope that the design, um, that he ultimately may get to do is actually reflective of what you saw tonight in the drawing. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Diane. Um, yeah, with respect to what the ZBA can and cannot do, it's, um, charter basically says it has to live up to the zoning code but may vary from the zoning code if there's a hardship or a substantial practical reason uh, not to follow the code. And that substantial practical reason is actually a harder issue to, uh, meet than is a hardship. Um, but there's this, this seemingly to me is kinda headed that way. So, uh, if you have to raise a roof line, uh, umpteen feet in order to meet the code to add the, uh, tower slash dormer area, um, that's a big ask. Um, and one could spell that differently. Uh, anybody else have a question or comment? Anything else? No? Okay, um, is there anybody else to, that wanted to jump in and be recognized? Or is it just Diane?
We have no other raised hands.
May I ask a question? Uh, uh, I'm, I'm just because I'm not familiar with the, with your process.
Yeah, sure.
A- after this, do, do y'all hear all of the, um, applications and then go into, um, a session after this to make the decision? Or how do I find out what the decision is?
If you have things that you wanna point out, um, you should do that now. Because when we get into the latter part of the meeting, when we do just exactly what you said we do, um, then you can't join in. So this is the time. Speak now or forever hold.
I, I, I gave my presentation, I hopefully, hopefully it sways your, your vote. Thank you very much for your time.
So with having the board satisfied and no further public input, and I don't know that you wanted to, uh, counter what Diane said, so I would think we can move ahead. And.
I like what Diane said, actually, so I think, that was, that was very helpful. Thank you, Diane.
Alrighty, so let's go on to the next item.
Very good, I, um, item two-three dash one-zero-one-nine dash zero-two. Norwalk five oh eight Real Estate LLC. Variance to allow a proposed ground sign on a lot with less than seventy-five feet of frontage. Existing thirty-point-one feet frontage. Section one-one-eight dash one-two-nine-four D-one and variance of setback required fifteen feet from any property line. Proposed two-point-six feet from front property line and point-two feet from side property line. Section one-one-eight dash one-two-nine-four D-two. Proposal includes a panel for a tenant to be determined at an existing commercial property on the rear lot in business zone two. Property located at five oh eight Westport Avenue, District Five, Block Eight, Lot One-fourteen. Request, the applicant seeks variance to install a ground sign that will include a panel for future tenant. The ground sign will provide wayfinding for the existing commercial building located on a flag lot, rear lot. Background, the existing commercial building was built in nineteen-seventy-two. Permits were issued in two thousand nine for a fitness center and prior to that in two thousand and five, a physical therapy center. Analysis and findings, there are currently no ground signs that would advise the public of the location and occupant. Staff believes this to be a reasonable request for variance as the ground sign is appropriately sized. The location of the building and the nature of the flag lot are a practical difficulty. Mr. Chair.
Uh, let me just remind everyone who's sitting on this one, I am not. So it's Lee, Lee Levy, Tom Parkus, Steve Ferguson, Keith Lyon and Ben Ham, Ham Peter. So that, that's the five and go right ahead, Lee.
Okay, uh, who is representing the, uh, uh, the applicant on this? Will you please come forward?
Jackie Kaufman. It is Jackie Kaufman. I'm an attorney with Carmody, Torrance, San Decan Hennessy. With an office in Stanford, Connecticut, ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard. Uh, here tonight with our team, you see several people, uh, who elevated here to, to present here, including my associate, Dan Pone. And then you also see several of our consultants, Abi Fides, William, our engineer and David Basser, uh, Brian Basser, our, uh, signed architect and designer. And then representing the property owners, David Light. And so we're all here to answer any questions, uh, for you and hopefully this will be a, a very succinct presentation. Uh, we do have a, a slideshow which I'll ask Dan to, uh, to please bring up and I'll, I'll start speaking though right away. Dan, are you able to? Perfect, thank you so much. And we'll just start, we'll go right into our, our first slide here, which is to a, a sense of the city, our property is number five oh eight, uh, Westport Avenue. Row off right over the border, uh, and let's go, that's advanced to our next application. The property owner is former name, Norwalk five oh eight Real Estate LLC. And, uh, they purchased this property back in two thousand and seven. It's a very unique shape, it's what we call it, flag law. And it includes, uh, as you zoom in towards, uh, the poster, you can see it's surrounded by, uh, many other properties. In fact, you see the asphalt along that, uh, frontage there. And it's a very narrow driveway that brings you into, uh, the rear of the property, which is the building envelope. And the building, which was built in nineteen-seventy-two. And I know that that was, uh, added into the staff report, that's, uh, the critical part of, of this discussion. Because as, uh, as far back as, as we can tell, there has always been signage in the location, uh, that that we are requesting signage. And, uh, as it was truly accidental what brought us to you. And it's that the existing tenant had vacated, it completed their lease and in putting up, because there's very narrow, uh, frontage out there on Westport Avenue, the property owner with no intent to abandon its sign replaced its, uh, tenant sign, its former tenant sign with a for lease sign. And, uh, as they went through the process of, of negotiating with their prospective tenants about what signage could be put out there, we learned that it did not even put back the sign that was there before because there was no record of any signage, uh, permits on file ever. Uh, even though when we purchased the property, we did so under the, uh, impression that there was signage there and that, uh, for applications that were put in to, uh, to the record that were before our ownership and then after our ownership for our, our own tenants, uh, included, uh, reference to that sign on those documents. So was, it was, it was quite a surprise and there was no intention of abandonment. So we're here tonight though to ask you to re, for permission to reinstall signage in the exact location. But what's been designed is, uh, completely conforming in height and in size passing, uh, to the underlying regulations. And is setback, uh, from the actual street, uh, about. And is setback uh from the actual street uh about fifteen feet from the right of way itself, which. Is optimal for wayfinding, but I think also could be considered to meet the spirit and intent of the underlying zoning regulations. Uh and. Uh we'll we'll get into some of these details and the and a little more of this slide. Uh Dan, could you please advance the slide for me? Just to give you some further context, I want to show you, this is the uh intensity sign. Intensity was the is. Was the former tenant here for many years and has since not renewed its lease. So this is the sign that was there and. It was the four lease sign that went in its place. Something that you can see here that uh is it contributes to the this unique situation. Is we have our driveway uh apron here. What we have here is thirty feet, thirty uh feet were seventy-five feet or required. Uh for the ground sign. So we typically you would have to have more frontage. Or not typically, the zoning regulations require a property to have seventy-five feet of frontage to have a ground sign out front. Uh but we only have thirty feet and that's a pre-existing condition dating back well before even nineteen seventy-two. Uh which you can also see is there is a grade change. There's some topographical challenges that occur here. So we don't even have a a s- a smooth surface between some of the properties. There's. Uh a slight downgrade here and even if you went to the rear of the building, you'll even notice some additional to practical changes. Uh what I don't, well, let's advance to the next slide, please. This is the picture of the property facing east. You can see, um Dan, if you could please hover around the intensity sign again. That's the sign that was previously there. And uh and you can also, what we'll talk about too, maybe closer towards the end of the presentation, should you wish to. To see there's lots of signs uh up and down the street and just a continuous uh curve of asphalt, so it doesn't create many opportunities. Uh especially in in our situation with a very, very narrow area uh to place the sign elsewhere. Okay, we can continue, please. In a way, I shouldn't say not just elsewhere, but in a way that's meaningful, that will actually send messaging to uh to motorists going. North, I'm sorry, east or west uh so that they can make a decision to make that turn very quickly. They don't have much time to do that. They said they only have thirty feet. It is. Uh it just enough to get to get in and out of the driveway. It doesn't in it doesn't include a turnaround or space or made an a a miscalculation. Um in where you were going, as we see with more modern developments. Uh gives you an opportunity to cr- to course correct. We don't have that opportunity here, and that creates a burden on all these other subsequent. Uh properties and curb cuts and create the dangerous situation for people traveling across this four lane roadway. What you see here in two thousand and seven is a picture that uh existed when they purchased the property, the property owner. Sign that says five oh eight, well, it doesn't have the tenant uh any tenant information. It does uh demonstrate that they reasonably relied on signage in. The same location that they're looking to install signage today. And also was the reason why uh they reinstalled tenant signage in that same location for us. And then this is just uh yet another view. I like this view and I think it's important for a few reasons. Number one, you see the amount of activity. I know you're familiar with the stretch of road. I know I travel it almost every single day. And uh but it just gives you an idea of how much is going on and how much a motorist has to take in. You are someone who's coming here, hadn't maybe been coming here uh every single day. Uh every the every moment counts. Uh people drive very quickly and there are many, many persons. So uh in order to give best uh directional wayfinding opportunities. You need to have signage. Secondly. Uh Dan, if you could please keep your your arrow and you can see the circle, the circle, uh the yellow circle shows shows its sign location. That's easy. Uh what you see to the left of the circle, to the left and just above it is is. Is a building that has parking behind it, okay? See the movie theater even further up. What happens is Dan, if you can please follow uh take take follow me on the driveway all the way across to the building in the back. It's a single story building and uh it's flat roof, so there's not much opportunity to draw attention to it from the road. If you were, all right, we're looking at a nice bird's eye view here and that gives you a sense, but if you're on the street, which you just saw from some of our other pictures. Very difficult to see this building, whether you're traveling to or from. If you are traveling east. The white entire, the white uh fitness center here, the intensity building of underneath the purple arrow. Are, oh that's on my computer, you can't see that. Uh but the big white buildings. Can't just go over to four ninety or some of the intensity buildings with the white roofs. The right right there. Um those those properties and those buildings will will block you as in all the rest as you're coming. You don't really see this building in the back. And then it you're coming in the other direction. You have a similar uh disservice because it's blocked by the. Uh by the movie theater, the former bed down, and also if you can take in here, just this very uh uh. Uh sloping property that happens basically from the movie theater down. It's a uh in such a way that this. Building itself is really, really hidden, doesn't have the opportunity to put uh any signage on the building that's. Uh useful for wayfinding purposes. So again, just another uh instance of demonstrating how the property. Dimensions, typography, layout itself is uh is detrimental to wayfinding. Next slide, please. This is the plan that's part of your pocket. Very, very small. On the left, you can see the dot which reflects the sign. And then in the insert on the right, uh you see that a little bit more closely. We included uh both dimensions in our variance request to uh both of the side yard and of the front yard because it's. A broad and vague regulation that you have and wanted to be thorough with you about what we needed. Uh a variance of two point six from the front yard property. But you'll notice if you look closely that there is additional distance to the actual right of way. Thank you for advancing us even closer here. Uh it's almost fifteen feet out uh to the actual curve, to to the actual roadway, and that's very helpful. And that was purposely done when we when we were looking at the the variance. You can see the proposed um. You know, where the base is and it comes out, it's an L-shaped sign. I'll show you that momentarily. But it's in a slightly approximately the same location, but also just slightly different enough to create that sense of distance. So that the spirit and intent of your regulations for fifteen foot uh. Frontyard setback could be honored uh the best that we could do, given our our current situation. Um in the existing property dimensions. Uh so we we do think that that is a benefit. And then also from the side, I mean, you can see here, given that the width of the driveway is. Uh almost the entirety of the width of the. Front uh the frontage of this property, which is thirty feet, it really. Uh challenges the ability test for us to put it in a conforming position. So here we have point two feet from the side yard uh property, and there is absolutely nowhere else for it to go unless it would be sitting. Uh squarely in the middle of the driveway itself, which would not be helping to any. Excited. This is yet another engineering image I had to give you. The sign of the sign itself. So this is a a typical full sign, fifteen foot square headed sign. Um since we filed this application, we have. Uh negotiated with a prospective tenant. It looks like it will be a one for one uh uh change of. And this sign, again, as as we that was with staff is fully compliant with the underlying regulation in terms of the sign. Nice big letters so you know where you're going and then it will have the tenant panels to to give the opportunity to.
Before you go past this layout, um. Want to make sure everybody's got, this is the chairman, I'm not actually making decisions on this.
No, no, go ahead Andy.
Make sure everybody has the height and width firmly in mind, along with the location you're recommending.
Yes, okay, so we are tw- we are at the pole itself, the base of the sign is twelve feet in height. And the. Tenant sign itself, it's fifteen square feet, that's roughly two and a half feet in height, the white panel. By approximately six feet out from uh from the edge. So while that is significantly.
From the bottom, the bottom of the panel down is. Ten feet? What? I can't quite read it.
Let you answer that, but from the tippity top to the to the absolute bottom is a measurement of twelve feet.
Right, and from the bottom of the sticky out part of the sign, the panel is roughly ten feet?
Six. Oh, uh now about six.
It's not six. It's not six. I'd say it's ten, just roughly.
Brian, would you?
Looks to be the bottom of the tenant sign is nine and nine and a half feet.
Oh, I'm sorry. That is, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know. I didn't. I misunderstood your question, sir. I thought you were talking about the.
So we know the ma- I just want to make sure we understand the parameters. We know the mass of the sign, we know the height of the sign, and we know. How wide the sign is, which is. Um a little under two feet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next two slides, which are included also in your presentation materials, are a little misleading, but it's uh because you're looking straight at it as opposed to taking other. Redring come from the road, but uh it is the approximate of of what you'll see here. It is uh significantly less than uh than than the light pole there. I think that's a that's a little misleading too, but. Okay, we can advance to the next slide. Uh the next two slides include a few uh letters of support that we've uh received from. Uh S C Crowley, owner of multiple residential and commercial properties in Norwalk. And then also from uh Charlie Mason, who is the tenant at four ninety Westport Avenue. And uh also from uh. The. Mister Wright, on behalf of multiple institution properties uh down uh Westport. Avenue within this vicinity, we can speak to those. Uh surely if you like, but really they all speak to the same thing, which is that. A uh supporting business which has no visibility from the post road uh is is important, not just from a business or advertising perspective. Uh but also from a a public health and safety and wayfinding perspective. We can advance the next slide. Also in our uh our review of of our own title, uh we found this uh missed supplies uh under under the land record. Uh some variances to our property, which we thought might have been hopeful in our discussions with staff, but in fact, those were associated with uh with the. Movie theater in Bed Bath & Beyond property, former Bed Bath & Beyond property. We just wanted to uh point out to you that those on that property, which you don't. We don't have a nice big blue uh square on, but four eighty-five seventeen, five oh nine. And also uh the movie theater property have all been beneficiaries of. Uh of sign variances, particularly full variances throughout the years, and I'd be happy to answer any questions uh that you have about that. And this is not to can say that it's. It's uh not unique. Each of these sign variances and the reason why they needed them were actually quite unique. Also to the geography, which the different uh different sizes of the property and the way that they were accessed. But they are uh. It's this information does demonstrate that there is a specific need on this particular stretcher ground in the way that. Uh some of the properties were laid out many, many years ago, uh well before uh our regulations have changed. And I think if we go back to uh to the uh one of our first site, Dan, please.
Do you have copy for that um this, again, for the board to know, copy for that uh. Tenant sign that'll be up at the top?
Oh, on the white sign, well, hasn't been designed yet. In fact, it was, the sign was designed in a manner. We can go back to that. Uh Dan, let's go back to the proposed slide. I mean, the proposed sign, just so we have it up. And we don't have that. Um the, but when we, when we made this application, the owner was still negotiating with the prospective tenant and we did not know what. Do know now that is a fitness name, but we have not received the branding and design as soon as uh. That negotiation is complete and that they've signed the contract, they will come back to uh to zoning staff and the building department with a designed sign there. Because this building is going to be entirely occupied by one tenant, the expectation is that this uh. Uh this panel, this white panel, will include only reference to one tenant.
So your sign uh saying five oh eight and then referring to the tenant will actually be right at the entranceway to five oh six. And so I don't know what you're gonna put on the sign or suggested you put on the sign, but somehow. Uh whoever turns in there has got to know that five oh six is there and five oh eight are both there and that the parking's to the rear.
I think that that's their point. If we go to Dan, we have another picture. Please go back to. Uh slide four. And if we zoom in on this, or if you can, uh you can see it. There's another very large sign, actually, one that's larger than the sign that we're proposing here. That's right outside of five oh six and which services that directly. That's been there for a long time.
The big billboard sign.
That's correct, and they also have their own entrance uh the driveway on the other side of that sign where Dan is pointing to with the white arrow.
Tammy, you okay?
Yes, thank you.
All right. No COVID tonight allowed.
So in addition to the the observation that uh staff made about practical difficulty, which uh certainly is true, there is also very uh very much a unique hardship here. Uh given its its shape, to poverty and uh. Under uh undersized frontage.
Leah, are you anywhere on this?
Oh, I'm I'm following along quite well. Um. I mean, I I see the practical hardships here. I mean, uh you've got a rear building with no architectural presence at all. Uh blocked by buildings to the east and to the west. Um does five oh six have the right to uh exit or enter from the driveway of five oh eight?
David, are you able to answer that question for us? Uh are there cross easements for these two properties?
Okay. Um Jackie, if I'm allowed to speak, I just don't know if I am.
Yeah, please. Thank you very much for answering that question.
Okay, let me turn on her. Trying to start my video as well, although we're sharing screens, that's okay. All right, so if everyone can hear me, this is David Wright and we uh represent the owners. Of uh the five oh eight property. Um uh we also have an affiliation uh and uh and have an ownership uh interest in the five oh six property, so I can speak for both. Um the five oh six building, to answer what was mentioned earlier, is they they have a a larger. Pylon sign, which Jackie already pointed out. And then they also have, if you want to move the cursor just to the right, uh it's City M D now, uh leased to a medical office. They have signage right there on the sign band where the uh cursor is right now, so they have extremely good visibility. They, yes, there is a shared easement for that driveway uh that we're talking about, which is access for both five oh six and five oh eight, and that's a a recorded easement. Uh you know, that's uh goes with the land records.
Does your sign identify you as five oh six?
No, because this this particular property and the driveway itself is actually owned by five oh eight. But five oh six has an easement to go over it.
I understand that. I understand what an easement is and that you have it. I'm wondering about um communication. With people who are looking for your buildings. And in your building, you you've said who you who's there, who's in the building, but have you given the number like five oh six?
Uh you know what? I that that's a great question. I don't know the answer. I think that the the five oh, I wish I had a picture of the uh City M D. Of the City M D sign.
Um anyway, I think you all ought to get together and figure out how to use the signage to both identify five oh six and five oh eight.
I do believe that I I do believe the city, I'm I'm looking for it now, but I do believe the City M D. Um does have five oh six on their pylon as well, but. um, does have five oh six on their pylon as well, but um, I can't answer that question just at the moment, so my apologies.
I'm looking at that too.
Hey, can I say something while you, I, I frequent this area and, and short of a compass and a Cub Scout, it's really hard to figure out entrances and exits to these because there are so much on top of each other. Uh, you know, I could go and I think we're not looking, willing to decide. I think intensity is right before this. So if you make, if you look to see you go to the car wash, you can make it easy right into intensity and there's no way out of that. You've got to come out. So I think the hardship is there. And also I think it's a driver detrimental because without signage and a number, you're, you're an accident waiting to happen. There's no turning lane along here. There's no third lane to let, let traffic make a mistake. So I'm applauding the fact that you're going to make it at least more discernible um, to the general public. I think there's just, there's a massive businesses right on top of each other here.
Thank you. I agree.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt this one.
Does that complete your presentation?
Yes, it does. If there are any other questions, we're happy to answer them.
Any board members have any other questions or comments of this applicant?
None from me.
None from Steve.
Or from me.
All right, y'all set?
Tammy, do we have any member of the public wishes to weigh in?
All right, just a moment. I just need to stop the screen sharing.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so we have no raised hands.
Okay, and I have no letters to read into the record.
Well, wait, wait a minute, Lee. Didn't we see supportive letters?
There, there were letters of, yeah, sorry.
By the attorney.
Yeah, they were sent after hours.
Okay.
Those were all included in our, in our slideshow. Uh, several of them were from, uh, from David Wright. Uh, and then also, um, the additional one which was sent, I think early this afternoon from, uh, from another property there. Can we just include this? We're aware of them.
David Wright is representing five oh six. And if I understood what you were saying, David, you were thinking the sign was appropriate.
Yes.
So there you go, Lee.
Okay. Any other questions on this application?
None.
Okay. Andy, I'll turn the meeting back to you.
Okay, um.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, um, just to make sure, Jackie, we don't need the rebuttal because there isn't anybody that was criticizing, so I think we're fine to move ahead.
No, no further comment. Thank you all for your time and consideration tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jackie.
So we've had two applications. Um, I'm going to take them in the order presented rather than the backwards version. I've never liked going backwards. Um, so we'll begin with the four bets place. And to remind everybody who is sitting and are the deciders, uh, it's Todd Parkus, Steve Ferguson, Keith Lyon, Andy Conroy, and Ben Hampeter. So Lee, you gotta sit this one out.
I will.
I'm going to open it for discussion because we have such an odd process. Uh, I think we need to make sure that the discussion is obvious. And to those that are listening in, I think that a practical difficulty exists, and that is that to accommodate zoning code, you have to do something that almost, almost ridiculous. I think the, uh, zoning board and the ZBA are pretty much bound to follow the zoning code. And I think in this case, the zoning code is leading us astray. Uh, that's my thought.
I agree. I think it's tough to justify adding so much extra mass to the building to basically sort of cover up what is already being proposed. Like it doesn't, you know, to follow the zoning code in this case doesn't really like change the, the outcome in, in a material way, other than to add a bunch of, you know, extra mass to the building. Just doesn't seem sensible.
No, it doesn't to me either. But some of the other members might think it is. Let's see.
Well, you know, generally, we don't consider cost or financial situations. And I think we don't. That's.
Including in this one, Lee.
Um, you'll see where I'm going. I think it's a beyond a financial hardship. I think it's a practical hardship to require the applicant to do substantial work to his house to achieve what this application does achieve in a much simpler, pure manner.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. If it can be achieved in a simpler, pure manner, it makes no sense to expand the project um, greatly. I mean, this isn't like a six inch move. This is a major movement of the roof line. Uh, and I'm, yeah, obviously would be a lot more expensive, but we don't know that because we haven't got into the cost and we don't know anything else going on in the project. But I think it's a practical difficulty and both of those things can be true at the same time.
Yes.
I think it aesthetically fits in with the neighborhood too. It, it seems to, uh, you know, we call it a widow's walk, cupola tower. It's consistent with those other homes along Seaview and Betts, so it kind of has a home, uh, without too much of a, an obstruction.
Yeah, I don't think we're defeating the zoning code. I think we're, um, actually achieving it. It's just, it's so backwards in this particular case.
We, Steve has his hand raised. Um, I'm not sure if he's meaning to do that, if you want to.
I was saying, I, I agree with Tom, like, he's spot on with that.
Okay, so.
Yeah, I think we're. To approve.
So Keith, repeat yourself.
I think we should have a motion to, uh, approve the application.
You have to address the appeal first.
Yeah, the appeal is always done first. And in this case, um, what's being appealed is the zoning decision that this did not meet the zoning code. I rarely would vote to overturn what zoning staff has said. In this case, I'm happy to do it because I think they were pushed into an impossible place by the code itself.
We.
We all agree. I think, well, sorry, I shouldn't say that. We're supposed to vote, but I agree also.
All right. So if, if we, um, are in agreement, I don't think there's a need for another step here. You with me, Tammy?
Correct.
Okay. So, um, his appeal is granted. Um, and there's no need now to six, to seek a variance, I think. Or do we need to approve a variance on top of granting?
You would not. So if the appeal is upheld, then it obviates the need for variance.
And I'm going to make the point again, this doesn't have anything to do with staff making an error. They didn't. It's just our function as a board to recognize that this is kind of a oddball situation. All right. Thank you. Uh, with that in mind, let's vote. All those in favor of, uh, granting the appeal, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Right, got it. Fantastic. Who seconded it, by the way? Me?
I'll second.
Uh, given that what I said, I probably would be a second.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
That's that item. Yeah, it's unanimous. The appeal is granted. We're not moving on to a variance discussion.
I'm sorry, who was the second on that? I missed it.
Oh, me, me. I was chatting away as though we're second, so it is the second. The next item up is, uh, the applicant for the property of five oh eight Westport Avenue. Uh, discussion is open.
Um, I think there's a real practical.
I was just gonna say, I'm not a decider on this. Everybody else is.
Yes. Uh, I, I think from my perspective, there is a very large, uh, practical difficulty, uh, being a flag lot, rear lot, whatever you want to call it. Uh, uh, visually, this building is blocked, uh, on the east and west sides and on the north side. And I think that you know, the, the location of the sign, um, it's just about the only place you can put it. So, um, uh, that's this application from my perspective.
Uh huh.
Anybody else wish to weigh in?
Yeah, no, I, I think they need to plant the flag there and sooner than later.
That means what, Tom?
That means I say that should be a sign there because otherwise it's, you know, you need a flagman to find that place. It's, it's, uh, it's tough.
No, I, that makes a lot of sense to me. I'm just a listener, though.
The, the only thing I would say is the applicant might have considered a portion of the sign dedicated to saying something like building in rear or some, something to give a better direction than just an address. And I would not be opposed if there was a, uh, small banner, uh, that said building in rear and an arrow going that direction.
But, but the name needs to be affixed to that number too, right?
Yes.
Well, you know, just an observation, isn't that number really, really, really big on the upright? And couldn't five oh six with smaller type following it vertically in the rear?
That could be. Um, you know, it's, we're, we're not reviewing technically what's on that sign panel.
We can make it a condition.
We could, and I think your, your point is well taken. And I think we can cover that in, uh, you know, an emotion that's made.
Yeah, I'm not making a motion because I'm not.
I know.
Well, I'm a listener. Are you, are you saying to put two numbers on that sign, five oh six and five oh eight?
No, if you think, this is just my thinking when she was showing it. Is that it's a very large number, uh, on the vertical. And if behind or as you go upward, reading upward, because I think it's from bottom to top, the way it's laid out. Um, if it said in the rear, then that would distinguish it from the building that's immediately to the left of the sign, which is in fact five oh six, which would be really nice if there was a number on that place that was similar in script and style. Um, and then you would be able to differentiate two buildings. You would know, well, the building I want's behind this building.
Hmm, might be a little bit too much literature to read and it shuts you short to amount of time before you make that right. It comes upon you very quickly. Although your GPS is going to tell you, you have like fifty feet to make that turn. So, um, I don't know. I don't know if you can put more information than just that five oh eight and, and the, and the name of the company. Uh, uh, on faith, you're going to make the right turn and then you're going to see it's a driveway.
I think once you're in the driveway, you kind of have time to figure it out.
The flag that sticks out and identifies the company?
Yeah, the flag sticks out identifying it. But.
They just don't know where it is, that's all.
Un- unless there's an address on five oh six, one might mistaken five oh six for five oh eight.
Right. That's what I thought.
Because you've got adjoining driveways and rightaways. So I'm going to make a, a motion.
Okay, Lee, before you do that, can I?
You froze.
These minimum four inch street numbers.
All right, here's the problem. Tammy, you froze. So you have to repeat everything.
Oh, no. Okay, what I said was, uh, the requirements for a ground sign are that they include, any ground sign is supposed to have minimum four inch street numbers, four inch, uh, number height. So five oh six should have five oh six, uh, the sign for five oh six should have five oh six. I think what Andy was saying is that he would want the five oh eight type typography to be reduced and have in the rear added on the monument.
Yeah.
Correct?
You, you got it. It's, it seemed to me that there's enough space. I may be wrong. I may not have it correct. But it seemed, or it could say small type in the rear, five oh eight. I mean, if you have to have five oh eight larger up higher.
Well, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the sign location as requested and we require, uh, the applicant to add to the sign, um, the words building in rear and an arrow.
Do you want that specifically on the monument or do you want it on the panel?
I think it could be on the panel. Because I think somebody is going to be looking for the business as much as the address. The address is so obvious with the size, the, the, uh, the size of the address numbers. That'll pop out, but I think somewhere in a similar typeface should be the words building in the rear with an arrow.
You, you gotta figure that whoever's seeing the sign, assuming they're not using GPS, Tom, is, um, looking at the sign and says, oh, I'm there. I just, yeah, here it is, five oh eight. And then they would probably decide to turn either right and come in or left and come. At that point, they need to know that it's to the rear and it's not right there in the corner. However, that is achieved, I think it should be, but I don't want to dictate how it's achieved, but I think it must be achieved.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I think, I think, I think an arrow probably would suffice there because I, I, there's also some talk about using this eventually to advertise for another tenant, but I think that that is not anytime soon, right?
Well, I think the way the sign is set up, I don't think you're going to add another tenant. And, uh, Ms. Kaufman said that the building is so small, they're not looking to subdivide.
Well, either way, either way, I think Tom's got a point. The arrow is probably more important than the, more important than the language. But we need some indication that they need to go back up that road, not just go to the corner.
I'm not particular on how it's presented. Only that it is presented, that there is a building in the rear to be looked for.
So you want to restate your motion? Because I think you're on the right track.
Uh, I make the motion that this location of the sign be approved as submitted. And in addition, the applicant add to the sign panel uh, the words building in the rear with an arrow directing them to the rear of the site.
And how they style it is up to them.
That's part of the design of the signage.
Yeah. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Tom second.
Thank you, Tom.
We made the motion. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All unanimous.
Aye.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Let me just make sure I recorded it. Then moving on, both items tonight have been approved and one with a slight restriction. Um, we've got the request for additional time. Which was eighty six Bluff and we'll take that first and then four seventy three Connecticut Avenue, uh, we'll pick second. Eighty six, eighty three, rather. Let me make sure I get the number right. Eighty six Bluff Avenue.
Would you like me to read the request for extension?
Yeah, I, I think so, but you know, brief.
Okay. Um, two, three dash zero, two, one, six dash zero, three, Philip and Aaron Kerr, variance of. Two, three dash zero, two, one, six dash zero, three, Philip and Aaron Kerr, variance of setback front. Twenty nine point three feet proposed to house twenty five point one property to entry. Forty feet required. Side nine point two to house, four point three to deck. Forty feet required aggregate side yard, rear, ten point five feet house, three point two feet to deck. Seventeen point five feet required. Building area thirty three percent proposed, twenty five percent allowed. Section one, one, eight dash three, three, zero, C, and variance of parking within the front yard setback section one, one, eight. Dash one, two, two, zero, J, to construct a new single family. Uh, flood compliant dwelling on a resident zone. Property located at eighty six Bluff Avenue, District Six, Block Fifteen, Lot One. Request, the applicant is requesting a six month extension of time in which to obtain building permits for the above referenced variance. The zoning board of appeals granted the variance on April tenth, twenty twenty three. Cam coastal site plan review was approved by the P and Z Commission. On May seventeenth, twenty twenty three. As such, building permits were necessary to be secured by November thirteenth, twenty twenty three. If the six month extension of time is granted, building permits must be then. Obtained by May thirteenth, twenty twenty four, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, I just want to make a notation that uh this is their first request. And um. We're not happy having follow on requests unless there's a very, very good reason. So if this request is granted, there needs to be a note in the file that we should look askance at any future additional requests. And I won't go into all the wives. So. Voting on this is uh everybody but me. So all in favor, raise your hand. And.
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Next item was uh four seventy three Connecticut Avenue. Um, I remember the presentation on this. Clearly.
Yes. Item two, three dash zero, six, one, five, dash zero, four, ever source. Variance of the required two story minimum for replacement pump station. Section one, one, eight, dash five, two, one, C, two, in business number one zone. Property located at four seventy three Connecticut Avenue, District Five, Block Seventy Three, A Lot Eleven. Request, the applicant is requesting a six month extension of time in which to obtain building permits for the above referenced variance. The zoning board of appeals granted the variance on June fifteenth, twenty twenty three. Building permits were to be secured by December twelfth, twenty twenty three. If the six month extension of time is granted, building permits must then be obtained by June fifteenth. Twenty twenty four, Mr. Chair.
Uh. Lee, I'll vote on this one, and you'll stay off.
I'll send it out.
I I could go with the extension, but I kind of wonder why it's needed. But if we give them a six month extension, then that's it. There won't be a further extension. But if everybody thinks it's reasonable to do so, uh, we can do it.
Well, they did come to us. They did come to us with a a very different design that we previously approved. Uh, they then came back to us with this. And uh I'm very willing to give give them uh. The six month extension, but I agree with you that. As a municipal project in conjunction with ever source. It should be a one time, six month extension.
Yeah.
I seem to remember.
I know that we pushed them a little bit on time, so that's why I'm okay with the six.
Yeah, but I sense there was no sense of urgency to get this done very quickly, so I'm kind of surprised.
Yeah, I know, so am I. But with ever source, it could be that they're dragging their feet because ever source always drags their feet, and I've had a lot of experience with it. Um, anybody else with a thought?
I think it's a good motion. To make it a one time.
All right, um. So I've made the motion. He's the second in it. All in favor, say aye and raise your hand. Aye.
Aye.
All right, unanimous. Fantastic. On to the administrator. Uh, has anybody had a chance to look at the uh minutes from September twenty one?
Yes, I have.
I took a look.
Uh, any alterations?
I found none.
I found a typo. Uh. I saw the word second with the trailing E, I think it was. Um. I I wasn't actually able to make the last meeting, but I figured I'd take a look anyway, and I did notice that. Everything else looked good to me, though. It was like on one of the earlier pages, I think. Sorry, I actually closed the minutes.
This is the word second.
Yeah, the word second.
Okay, so we need just a quick correction to.
Yeah.
Um, anyone else?
No, they're good.
Okay, if if we're good, um, I'll move that we accept the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? And I don't care who votes.
Aye.
We're all set.
Aye.
The trading status. Have we ever figured out what the legislature was doing to modify what their initial instructions were?
I don't know that it's clear yet. We are waiting for some confirmation from our own corporation counsel. Um, so.
We need to give him a six month extension?
Um, maybe. I I still.
And only one.
Um, I. I still think. It's going to be mostly the same for all the seated members. I there may be. Some additional time. I still only received four of the certificates, so I need whoever else went. I I have Andy's.
No, Leah was waving his hand. What, Lee?
I I am in the process of cleaning out my office. I know it's here.
Okay.
Okay.
I will copy it and send it.
And so if you didn't go, we're trying to find more opportunities. So I'm talking about the March uh meeting.
Well, that's a little more um. Difficult to deal with than just sort of saying, well, maybe that's changing. Here's the problem. It was originally described, their intent was. To even though the law says once you're on the board, you're on the board until you resign um or kick the bucket. And um, you know, it's i- if you're there. And you don't want to resign and you stay on, they're saying you can't function. Because you don't, you never met the certificate. So it's kind of a weird thing that because there's a conflict of the two laws. Uh, one law saying that you can't be a functional board member, the other one saying you can't be removed. So, you know, which is it? And uh. It's a kind of important because then we be could become an illegitimate board and not know it.
I'll try to have some clarity for us for the next meeting.
Telling me doesn't get a six month extension. So if anybody owes the uh the affirmation that you met. The requirement and got a letter saying so, please make sure that Tammy gets it. No help. Anything further? Any new business?
Next meet, next meeting is uh November sixteenth.
Okay. I'm gonna do one last vote. All in favor of not listening anymore to Andy?
I'll second her.
All right, thank you all. Have a good night.
Thanks, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night, guys, ladies.